Called order the Board of County Commissioners work session for August 12th, 2014. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance to salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice above all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the real symbol of perfect friendship among all American citizens.
Welcome, everybody. It's nice to have a semi-full house this morning. First thing on is to approve the agenda for the work session.
Still move?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The purpose of a work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners and of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regards to matters to their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1401, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. First and next item on the agenda is to review the August 14th, 2014, regular meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item will be a public hearing for discussion regarding the option of ordinance 14-06. Would you like me to read the whole title?
No problem.
Okay. The ordinance is entitled "Authorizing the issuance and sale of Grant County, New Mexico Gross Receipts Tax Revenue Bonds in One or More Tax Exempt or taxable Series in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 5 million." Actually, that's going to change to "not to exceed 7." We just got our final draft of the ordinance, so I'll make some final changes in our agenda and after this meeting. "Not to exceed 7 million for the purposes of constructing, purchasing, furnishing, equipping, rehabilitating, making additions to, or making improvements to one or more public buildings, or purchasing or improving ground relating thereto, including but not limited to acquiring and approving parking lots, or any combination of the foregoing, all within the county, providing for the form, execution, and other details concerning the bonds, the funds appertaining thereto, and for a supplemental resolution of the county establishing certain details of the bonds, providing for the payment of the cost of issuance of the bonds, approving disclosure, and other documents relating to the bonds, and ratifying action previously taken in connection therewith." And this is the bond ordinance, the ordinance for the bonds that we've been discussing for quite a while. And we're still working on the final number. Mr. Valenzuela is here today. He's been working with us closely on this. I don't know if you have any questions for him.
Mark always likes to talk, so.
And you're representing us as the financial advisor on the bond issue, right?
Yes, sir.
George K. Baum.
George K. Baum is the firm that I represent. I am first vice president, Mark Valenzuela, for the record. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, good to be here with you this morning. As you know, we've been starting to move through this process that relates to this ordinance. At this time, we envision that the bond issue could be up to 6.6 million. Ideally, we believe it's going to be lower than that, just based on the way that we're structuring it with bond investors and through their rating agency process. So having said that, if you approve this ordinance on Thursday, what we would do is return within four weeks with a bond sell and have investors in hand, so to speak, for you to approve through a sales resolution process, which would identify the interest rates, it would identify the maturities, it would identify any terms related to the bond contract that you'll have with the investors. And after that point, we will close on the transaction and have funds to you for your projects within two weeks thereafter. So at this point, it's moving relatively quickly with your approval of this ordinance, of course. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might ask specifically about the financing or the projects or whatever it might be.
Mark, could you explain why we don't have an exact number yet?
Sure. I'm happy to do that. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and manager, Robinson. Sorry, it's, I was about to say sorry, and I'm sorry for, nonetheless. The financing is dependent on your bond rating. And at this point, you have a bond rating only on your general obligation bonds, which is Amoody's. It's issued by Amoody's and it's an A3. It's a great rating. We're hopeful to get a higher rating through this process. And if we are able to get a higher rating, we will not have to provide reserve funds for these investors, for the bond market. A reserve fund can cost you 10% of your bond issue. So just simple math, if we borrow 6 million for projects, we'll have to borrow an additional 600,000 just to serve as the reserve. Now, if we're granted a higher bond rating, there's a chance that we may not have to have that reserve. So that's really why, at this point, why the number's in question. We anticipate getting a bond rating within the next week and a half. And once we know that, then we'll be able to firm up the numbers.
And there's also some mitigation possible through bond insurance.
That's right. So if we do say the current rating of Amoody's, A3, which again is a great rating, we have the opportunity to buy a policy through companies that provide it specifically for county government issuers. And what they essentially do is you pay them a small premium and they have a higher bond rating. And in fact, those that we are talking to have a double A bond rating. So we're able to buy up our credit to that level. And having said, if we accomplish that, again, we can buy another policy that does not require us to have that reserve fund. So once we know what the rating is, we'll have much more certainty about where we're at. And at that point, we'll be able to approach investors in the market much more quickly.
Anything else? Thanks, Mark, for coming down. I know it's a long drive for a few minutes.
Always thrilled to be here in your community.
Okay, so I guess we can, if nobody has anything else on that, when we move on to, Abby going through the financial reports, I guess?
Yeah, it looks like financial reports for Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the expenditure check approval report, which includes the AP checks, beginning with check number 171097, ending with check number 171322. And it includes two payroll periods, the period July 6th through July 19th and July 20th through August 2nd. The total amount for this expenditure report is $1,532,840.23. And it includes a check to NMAC for the renewal of the Workman's Comp policy in the amount of $223,149. And the rest of your checks are pretty much your normal utilities payroll.
Any questions? Gentlemen?
No, sir.
Okay. Go ahead and move on then. Guess we're down to C.
I was seeing the proclamation declaring August 23rd, 2014 as Ride for the 4H Clover Day. And I believe we have, yeah, sorry.
Do you have Judy in the audience? I know you've got a little spiel on this.
Good morning. Which one? The white one? There, from beyond? Good morning. Chairman, Commissioners, fellow coworkers for the county. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you today. Today, just a little bit about the Ride for the Clover. This event will be happening on August 23rd, which is a Saturday. It happens to be happening on the same day as the NRA banquet, which is our huge fundraiser. So we're multitasking at the very best. So what we would like to get a proclamation for is this event is, it's going to be the second annual Ride for the Clover. And it came about because one of the NMSU regents, Mr. Mike Kany, wanted to raise awareness amongst other people that may not know so much about what the extension service does or what 4H does in the communities. So he came up with this idea last year and an entourage came with the riders. I think there was like 35 couples, so 35 different bikes last year. But there were also some cars that came. And in one of those cars was the president of the university, Dr. Gary Carruthers. And he will be accompanying them again this year. So what they do is they will start in Los Cruces at the extension office center. They will go to Lake Valley, go across to the Black Range, come through the Black Range, hit San Rita Mine about 10:45, 11-ish. And then we will have a luncheon and a bathroom break for them at the convention center. So they'll be coming through town. The car show's going on that day. They would like to go down Hudson, come around up Bullard, and then back out at Snake Hill because then they'll go to Katron County. And they end up the first night in Socorro County. And then they cross over and go back, Carrazo, and end up back in Los Cruces. So that's what that's about.
Okay. Any question?
Great idea.
Thank you.
So that'll be, what time at the convention center that they'll be having lunch?
We expect them to be there for lunch between 11 and 11:00. And the other thing is, we're going to bring the shooting sports trailer. We have a little trailer with the pellet guns. And so the public that would like to come, the kids can shoot. I think there's three different guns and three different kids that can sit in there and shoot at the metal silhouettes. So the public is welcome to come as well. So we wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy. Okay. Go ahead, Abby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item D will have two intergovernmental vehicles donated to the sheriff's office and the Sixth Judicial District Attorney's Office. I think they just didn't have any use for them anymore and the sheriff's office are going to put them to use. I don't know if the sheriff has anything to add for that.
I thought that was a typo. Surely we're giving what? The one that got reversed. Yeah, from the DA's office.
And next, item E is the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Program grant. This is the grant for emergency management and it covers basically Gilbert Pelton's salary and benefits. And we get $21,456.86 from the department and our match is equal to that. Then under F, under F, I'm asking whether or not you all would approve payment to the Human Services Department in the amount of $204,269 for the period of January to June 2014 under the Sole Community Provider Program. So this is the last six months under the Sole Community Provider payments. That amount is what is proposed by HSD in lieu of the amount we had previously committed to contribute to pay the hospitals. It's equal to 1/12th, or their estimate of 1/12th of our gross receipts, which is, as you probably remember, the new amount under the Safety Net program. I know that some counties have declined to pay. Some have, you know, have a higher amount that HSD is asking them for. Ours is actually a fairly reasonable amount. I checked with Linda and we do have the money that we normally would have used under the Sole Community Provider. So we do have that money. My understanding that the money is being used, if you look in the letter, it's to pay the hospitals again.
They're using it for matching on the, for the last half of last year.
So it is coming back to our hospital. I don't know if Brian knows much about this, if you want to add anything.
Sheriff, if you want to come up.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So just to add on that, yes, and very recently, we did receive a payment from the state of about a little over $5 million for the Safety Net Care Pool. The, you know, you know how complicated this gets. The uncompensated care portion of it. Now, that five point, I think it was one or two million, was the balance for this calendar year. So Sole Community Provider ended December 31st. Safety Net Care Pool started January 1st. And we got our first payment, we got the full calendar year payment retro back to January. And so part of that will actually get booked in last fiscal year for us. Additional part will be for this fiscal year. So money is starting to come in and they're working out the other component. Part is uncompensated care, part is the Medicaid expansion or the base rate increase, and we're still working out those details. So just, you know, briefly, as this really complex program has moved forward, we are starting to receive monies back from the state.
Thanks, Brian. Do you happen to know what this 200,000 is for? Because if you've gotten, is this for prior to that?
I'd have to look at that document. I'm wondering if it is moving forward in preparation for next calendar year. I'd have to see the letter.
I can read this petition. It's really broad, or general, I should say, what they, how they explain it. It says, "While the enactment of Senate Bill 268 changed the county contribution format beginning July 1st, 2014, the legislation did not alter the county budget contributions for fiscal year 14. And the Human Services Department still needs county support to make hospital payments for the remainder of the fiscal year, January through June. And we are preparing to make payments to the hospitals for the second half of fiscal year 14, 2014." It's a little difficult for me to understand exactly what that means. I think they're using the money to pay the hospitals. Looking to get the match and then pay the hospitals again, so.
We are to get together and.
We could just ask, follow up and ask them, you know, exactly how this is going to work. I think that's a difficult thing about the transition to the new plan is it's really kind of so general for me, not understanding how this all, you know, works, the details.
Just about the time you think you really understand it, something else comes out and you don't understand.
Make some calls and figure that out.
You read the Santa Fe letter that we have not.
I think an interesting example is what some counties are doing. It's like Santa Fe's thinking about paying what they're being asked to pay, but they want to know more.
But what causes me, and that's saying, I think we need to, some clarification, is because that's what they're asking for, is clarification. And so we need to make sure we clarify this before we do it.
Actually, they wanted already, but because technically, I don't know if they have a legal basis to require this money.
That's the question. That's what counties are saying.
I would say we have flexibility on the due date since possibly we're not required to do this. I think, you know, in the end, if they're doing, you know, using the money appropriately and it's coming back to our hospital, I think it would be helpful to our hospital to go out and send the money in, especially since we have it. But, you know, I do agree, we don't have all the information.
Quickly in the meeting and track it down.
If we can't figure it out by Thursday, we'll just put it on the next meeting.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Go ahead, Abby.
Item G is revision to the Grant County's appeal of the record decision for the travel management plan on the Gila National Forest. And what this is, if you go to section G, and we skip those first two pages, I've added a page that just describes what the changes are. They're very minor language changes. Throughout the entire document, we're going to change current level of management intensity to current management direction. And after consulting with our group that worked on this, after they consulted with an attorney on the matter, the attorney felt that it would be more advantageous to use the latter language. So it's not a major change. And then also on page four, they refer to local governments as quasi-governments. I think it was just a, you know, inadvertent oversight. So just those minor changes. So what you have before you, I didn't print out the entire document again. I just wanted to let you know what the changes are. And then your signature page is what Mr. Zembriga will have. So just those minor changes and then we'll resubmit those along with the previous appeal that we submitted. Under item H, we have the dedication of right-of-way easement for purposes of the Assessment District in Wind Canyon Estates. And this is just another one of the assessment districts that we've been working on with our subdivisions. Anthony and Dory have reviewed the plat and the signatures and feel confident that we've acquired all of the abutting landowners. So it may not be every resident of the subdivision that's signing the dedication because they don't all abut the road. When it comes to the petition, we'll have the required number of everyone in the subdivision. But just for the dedication, it may not be everyone in the subdivision. It'll just be those abutting. And I don't know if Anthony has anything to add on this one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the reason that not all of the residents are signing is because the roadway actually wasn't developed exactly where it was supposed to have been whenever it was plotted. And in speaking with the residences, they all agreed that they didn't want to move the road. They want to leave it where it's at. And so that's the reason why the road actually crosses some of the residents' property and doesn't even touch another's. They still have their access. And all those agreements have been done with the residents themselves. And so therefore, we are actually going to approve the easement from the existing roadway center line description and then have an easement on 30 foot of each side. So that's the reason why some of those residents don't have to sign.
Thank you.
New item I, let's see if I can say this. Is it Terice?
Yes.
Terice Grahalva from the Southwest Council of Governments will give a presentation on the statewide long-range plan. And then under J, John Strand is coming to give an update on the Sunzias Southwest Transmission Project. I think he came before, didn't he?
I think he's actually kind of moved along now.
Under item K, we have an agreement for the employment contract for the county manager. I've been communicating with Ms. Webb and we were able to reach an agreement. It's very similar to the prior agreement with John. And it's in the packets for you to review and she's already signed it. And under item L, we have a memorandum of understanding between the Sixth Judicial District Court of New Mexico for Surveillance of Adults and Juveniles. And this is the program that we've had in the past. Last year, we added adult surveillance and I, my understanding is that it was very successful. So we're going to continue with the juvenile and the adult surveillance. And that's run by Ms. Margaret Bagay and she seems like she's doing a great job. It's a really organized program. So that's what I.
Wasn't there a problem this last contract where they were looking at counting of money? And we went over. Is this the same contract we're talking about that we're renewing?
As far as we're concerned, what would you like to see?
Well, what I'd like to see is that if in fact it was a problem in the counting, then I would like to see them stay on top of it. I think they went over.
I think what the deal was, when we expanded the program last year to adults, we didn't, it was kind of just on a trial basis. We didn't have a precise number. We knew that the adult program, adding that piece, was going to cost more. So what we had to do is figure out exactly how much more it cost. It came out to be around 25,000 in real money. The court is actually putting a lot of in-kind into the program as well. So it's kind of a, it's a joint effort and we were able to figure out how much, you know, you never know exactly how much your program's going to cost, but we figured out how much we thought it cost and then we budgeted accordingly, based on that amount.
I support the program. I think it's very effective and so I just, I don't want to do, I don't want anything to happen that would, you know.
It's in the budget this year for the amount that's a problem.
A set amount that they should not exceed. Then under resolutions, item M, we have the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, an intercept agreement with the New Mexico Finance Authority for $47,960 for Santa Rita Subdivision Assessment District. So this is the assessment district that you've already approved and that we've already filed a lien for these residents. And we've had quite a bit of money come in already and several of the residents have already paid off the entire amount that they owe, which is reassuring. But we went ahead and we did get the loan from NMFA and we've been approved and these are the documents for it. I don't know if Anthony has anything to add, but, and this is probably how we're going to proceed with the rest of the assessment districts because we have so many right now. This will allow us to not take money out of our general fund to pay for the construction and the materials. Let's see. Under item N, we have a resolution authorizing a one-half cost of living adjustment for the county employees, with the exception of the sheriff's office employees, department heads, and chief deputies. And what this is, is recall that we recently increased the, all of the union employees and then we also added the rest of our employees as well, excluding management, really. We gave them all a cost of living increase and the sheriff's office was at 1.5% and then the rest of the employees were at 1%. And that was what was negotiated by the union. This is before you because it's my understanding that the commissioners may be interested in increasing the rest of the employees to that 1.5%. So that's what the last 0.5% is. We did put it in the budget just in case you all would like to do that, so the money is there. So that's what we're asking you to consider. Then, let's see, under item O, you're going to have a July 11th, 2014 indigent burial certificate from Terasas Funeral Chapels. And that's the indigent.
For Thursday. So at this time, we can move into county reports. I think I'll start with Chris DeBolt from the Health Council.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and thank you. I have my cohort here with me who will give a brief report as well. On the state level, the health, we are working very closely with New Mexico Alliance of Health Councils, which is a statewide 501(c)(3) advocating for restoration of the funding, the Department of Health funding that the Health Council's lost about three years ago. So we'll be working very closely with them. And at the appropriate time, probably this fall, I'd say September, October, perhaps come before you for some support in the form of a letter to go to the state and help us with that effort. It would be very, very nice. Second, on the local level, just wanting you to know, our five new members that you approved last month are ready and they will be oriented this month and they will be seated at their first quarterly meeting in September. We have one new person to bring to you as well for the interpersonal violence department and her name is Joanie Connors. We'll be bringing that to you formally later in the month. We also have another one in the works, so slowly but surely, we are getting a full council again, so really happy about that. And then, just to tell you quickly, the work on our priorities, the four priorities in the plan, family resiliency, which includes early childhood and senior issues, our community's health and safety, which we're focusing on disabilities, and the Disability Resource Center, what you'll be hearing about that, a rollout of that because we're participating and helping with that as well. And then we also have, under interpersonal violence, we're working on bullying in the schools with our priority plan partner. It's a very big issue. As well as bullying in the community, bullying in any form that it takes, but schools, we're looking at some policy work there. And then domestic violence and sexual assault, of course. And then, last but not least, we have substance abuse, which is major, as everybody knows, and that is adult as well as youth. And that's why I brought Razana Robinson-Thomas, who is our program coordinator for the Partnership for Success, too, to tell you a little bit about a very successful event and strategy we had. we had.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Good morning, everyone, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So like Chris said, I'm just here essentially to talk to you about one out of our 10 environmental strategies, which we feel if we implement all 10 correctly, we'll be able to help reduce a lot of our youth substance abuse issues here within Grant County. So the one that we have finally completed, My Baby, 101 Things for Youth to Do in Grant County, I'm not sure if you've seen these before, hopefully you have. Yes, awesome. So 101 Things, the basic concept was, it wasn't really about the youth. Essentially, this concept is a community readiness strategy. So the idea is by meeting with business owners, with you all, by meeting in the community and saying, this is why we want this program, this is how it came about, we are raising the awareness of our issues, of our substance abuse problems. So we had 50 businesses participate on the list out of 101, so it was a good even split. Everything was free to all of our youth, even transportation was free. We managed to work out a deal with Cory Camino so that if the youth had this list in their possession, they could ride the bus for free throughout the summer to get to all these activities. It really helps out our youth who live in the mining districts, who have difficult times getting transportation, to come into Silver City and complete activities, and vice versa. So the event went really well. We ended it with our last event called Tiki's and Tacos. It was held in Baton Park this Friday. We had a really successful turnout of about 700 people, so we were ecstatic. Free tacos for 1,000 people was our pitch, and I think it really reeled people in. We got to thank all of our participating vendors, and we intend on doing this again next year. So those of you who would like to participate, feel free to bug me. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
No, I'm excited by it. Good job.
Good job. Anything else, Chris?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for coming. You're always welcome.
Clear up.
Do we need some clear air?
Yeah.
Can we get air freshener turned on, Ren?
Can we forget setting a budget?
Okay. And then we kind of got you started a little bit, but-
Yeah, warmed up.
Yeah, you're warmed up.
Thank you, and again, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I want to do kind of a brief report today and close out for us fiscal year 2014, and then do a couple of updates on some of our transition activities and give you guys the opportunity to ask some questions. We have a board meeting coming up next week, so again, our financials are a month behind for this meeting. But this is the closeout as of the end of June 2014, and we've made some predictions along the way, and they turned out to be fairly accurate. And just as another reminder, fiscal year 13, we closed out the year negative $9 million in the red. Fiscal year 14, we close out $2.4 million in the red, and that represents a $6.6 million turnaround in about a 10-month period. And I just can't say enough about the caregivers and the support of our commissioners and our board. This is a lot of people doing a lot of work for that part of the turnaround. And as I stated earlier, we did receive some state monies for the Safety Net Care Pool, and we're currently doing our end-of-year independent financial audit, and they're going to probably help direct us, will we book any of that money into fiscal year 2014? So theoretically, that ending number, negative 2.4, might shift a little more. It might come down to about, maybe even close to negative 1 million. And we'll do that based on our auditor's recommendation on how to book that. So again, can't say enough. And I want to tell you, some people say, well, where did that come from? And where it came from was in various operational efficiencies. Our salary, you know, our big items, just like every other business, salaries went down significantly, benefits, of course, coincided differently, supplies were down. We did a lot of work around our purchased contract services, renegotiating contracts, saved a significant amount, renegotiating some of our insurance rates. So just a lot of work, but it was mostly in operations, not too much positional changes, mostly in efficiencies. We ended the year, our total cash on hand last fiscal year was 109, total cash at the end of fiscal, or excuse me, days in cash, days in cash, was 109. Days in cash at the end of fiscal year 14 was 128. That was a combination of receiving some payments from the state, but mostly it was in the form of our operational efficiencies. We have talked about this in the past. We drove our daily spend down. Most hospitals struggle with this. We've struggled with it over the years. But our daily spend, how much it costs us to do business, went from $191,000 per day down to $174,000 per day as of the end of the fiscal year, and that's a really significant number. So even if we had the same amount of cash on hand, our days in cash go up because we're spending less per day. So there's, as you guys very well know, multiple components of this business equation, improving revenues, improving collections, decreasing costs, efficiencies, continuing to drive quality up, but driving that daily spend down, and all those variables hit your cash. From an operational standpoint, I'd like to talk about one issue that we've been dealing with for a while. We've been short one general surgeon since November of last year. We have finally made an agreement, or in the process of finalizing an agreement with a general surgeon. His name's Dr. Friedman. He's been working with us on a locum's rate, doing fill-in work with us for many, many months, so we know him very well. And he's respected by our physician community and our patients. And he'll be joining us on October 1st as an employed HEAL Regional physician. So that's a kind of another shift for us. And now I want to get into kind of some of these transitions we're going through and open it up for questions. As you guys know, we have developed a new contract with a new ER medical provider group, and that provider, again, is Enova. And they're a small regional company out of Colorado, and we're moving forward to finalize those arrangements. They'll be out here next week for some initial meetings, so that transition is scheduled from MCARE, our present ER provider, to Enova, and that's scheduled for January 1st, and we're on track for that. The air ambulance transition, I want to just give you some updates around that. As you guys know, our present air ambulance is Native Air. They've been our air ambulance right-of-first refusal agreement. So to clarify, we have an agreement with them. All it means is we call them first. We work with other air ambulance services. If Native Air isn't available, we go down the line and call others. Their contract was up recently. We did an RFP process. We analyzed three different companies, and in the end, it came down to Native Air, our present company, and Tri-State. All things equal across the board, based on our analysis at that time, and we looked at quality, we looked at efficiencies, we looked at service, we looked at cost, of course, cost to our community. And that's an important point. There's been questions asked to us, well, what does it matter to HEAL Regional? Because there's no exchange of money between us, HEAL Regional, and our air ambulance. They operate independently. But the cost is to our community. And so we most certainly took that into consideration as part of this process. So one of the major complaints we've had over the last couple of years have been about our ER and about our, the air ambulance bills that our community members have been receiving. Native Air, I believe, has done an excellent job for service and quality over the years. We have no issues with them. This is a great group of people, committed group of people. However, their company is the largest in the country, and they are obviously, they're a company that is investor-owned, and so they have to pay shareholders, you know, you know how that works. Tri-State is a smaller regional company, privately owned, and when we got to the cost part of the equation, the charge to our community members was approximately half of what Native Air was charging. So I wanted our commissioners to know, one of the key drivers of that decision was the cost to our community. And once again, questions have come up, well, what does it matter to HEAL Regional? And our answer to that is, HEAL Regional is part of this community, and so we're most certainly taking into consideration the cost to the community. Presently, presently, we have about two months left in our extended contract with Native Air as we are evaluating the recent extremely unfortunate accident that happened with Tri-State, with that helicopter accident up near Tukunkari. But we're continuing to move forward, kind of tentatively, as we evaluate the reasons for that crash and what has come out of that. We don't have the information on that yet. So just, you know, basically, so everybody knows, we evaluated multiple companies, all things equal, at the time of the evaluation, service, quality, all those things. The cost to our community is approximately half with Tri-State, and they do a little bit better job of working with the insurances that people have. So I wanted to put that one out, and again, questions at the end for that. And the last transition I want to talk about is our home health hospice transition. We've been talking to community groups to help clarify the what and the why about that decision. Individuals have called me, and I've talked on the phone, or they've come and visited me. So we continue to talk and clarify that process. But where it stands right now is we continue to move through that transition. We had approximately 50 home health patients at the time of the beginning of the transition. We have approximately half of that now. We had about 12 or 13 hospice patients, excuse me, and we still have about the same number as we transition. In our community, Horizon Home Health and Horizon Hospice have continued to gear up and take more and more patients for that transition. And we continue to work with three additional groups, independent providers of home health and hospice, that want to fill any void left over. And they want to fill the void in Grant County, in Hidalgo County, and also, to a degree, in Catron County. So it looks like we'll be able to cover all of our patient needs. Our goal with this transition was that patients were impacted minimally, and that our caregivers will be impacted minimally. As I stated before, the need for home health and hospice still exists here. So even though HEAL Regional won't be servicing that need, patients will still be cared for, and our employees will either be rejoining HEAL Regional in some capacity or joining another organization. So it'll be minimum impact on patients, minimal loss of net jobs to the community. There may be a few, and we'll be able to report that when the transition is done. And I stand for questions.
Questions, Brian?
Well, I did have a question. I have, I've had a few people from the community approach me and ask me, now that the change has been made on our community provider monies, if we're turning away any type of emergency room business or turning away any business at the hospital?
From an emergency room standpoint, we never, ever, ever turn away anybody that comes in. It's a regulation, there's laws. Yes, you come in, it doesn't matter what your status is as far as insurance. Now, we work with everybody who walks in to make sure they have the appropriate insurance, and if they need assistance with Medicaid enrollment or whatever, we work with them. But no, no one gets turned away. We're also currently working on, and hopefully will be done this month, I've talked a little bit about it in the past, is also an additional program offered by HEAL Regional. It's our charity program. What we're attempting to do is, and it's a complicated formula, but we're trying to target that gap between people that are on Medicaid, 138% of poverty level and below, and people that can afford the healthcare insurance exchanges. And so there's a gap in between there. Some people fall into that crack. They don't qualify for Medicaid, and yet they can afford healthcare insurance on the healthcare exchanges. And hopefully, we're going to be bringing that through our board this month to fill that gap, to further help and support people that are in that gap. So we're doing a lot of work around that.
What kind of number do you think that is?
As far as people, people or dollars either one? We've been trying to model that, and we, every time we try to model it, we get a different number. It's very difficult to model. We don't know how many people this is going to be. We don't have historical data around it. So we've come up with a conservative model for the policy that we're going to roll out, and in the first year, it'll allow us to see what the impact is in numbers and dollars. And at that point, we'll be able to adjust from there. We may expand it in the following year, but it's, we're really kind of guessing at that number.
If somebody comes in that happens to be in the 138% of poverty level, can they refuse enrollment into Medicaid?
They most certainly can. And if they walk into our ER, they get treated no matter what their status. But they most certainly can refuse. We, there's some strategies we can use. Can we help sign them up for Medicaid if they would like to? We can help them with that initial process, and that helps us receive some initial reimbursement. But they could refuse or just not follow up to finish that application. Yes, they most certainly can.
Do you have anything else?
I guess, having experienced the air ambulance, that cost is so ridiculous. From here to Albuquerque, $45,000? That's ridiculous. And how many people can pay that? And how many people put themselves behind, you know, the eight ball because they're not covered and such? And I just really question if it's Native Air or whoever, how they can justify $45,000 for a trip from here to Albuquerque. And I think, I don't know what we can do about it, but I tell you what, something needs to be looked into because I think either through a monopoly or whatever, it literally destroys people. And I know people who didn't resist or anything and start selling off property, start selling, or start emptying their savings and stuff. But that's something I think that we've got to work on, and I appreciate you doing that. And Tri-State, if they're cutting that in half, even a half, I think is ridiculous. But still, to cut that in any way, and they're not nice about it. Let me tell you, they're not nice about it. So I was lucky twice to, I'm all right, but there is, I know other people in the community that's really suffering because of it. So I appreciate you working on that. Thank you.
And I just want to differentiate, you know, that's their corporate strategy on how much they charge, and they base it on whatever. But the workforce here, the Native Air workforce, I just want to make a differentiation. These are great people, members of our community doing good work. And we've had that honest dialogue with them, that we appreciate them. But they're under a different set of rules as far as what they can charge. They can, they have a lot more leeway than what most other healthcare providers can charge. Tri-State, again, is roughly half. They have two sets of charges. One is their liftoff charge, so they charge you a rate just to lift off the ground. And then there's a per-mile charge. And Tri-State is about half in both of those. And our goal is to, you know, try to obviously maintain the highest quality possible with this complex, dangerous service, air ambulance. So quality, service, but we most certainly need to consider that cost to our community. I know, and in air ambulance's defense, I know that they do work with some people. They don't usually collect that amount of money, that there isn't work, but that initial charge is a consideration. Yes, it does.
How many people do we fly out of?
So I'll bring that to you next month. We're doing actually a multi-year analysis. The question keeps coming up, you know, how come we're flying, you know, so many people out? And the truth is, we don't have the, we haven't looked at the comparative numbers over the years. I want to be able to answer for the community, we have flown out more, or we haven't flown out more, what some of those common reasons are. But you can assume, the main reason why we fly people out is cardiac issues, we don't have an interventional cardiologist that HEAL Regional never had, and trauma, and, you know, a few others. And with an aging, sicker population, you would assume that each year that that number would increase to some degree. But I'll have the numbers for our board and for you guys in this next month, kind of comparative over the years.
Thanks for coming, Brian. We appreciate your report.
My pleasure.
You bet. Mike? Did it catch you doing something else?
Chairman, Commission members, I respectfully submit my report for July 23 through August 12, 2014. Item number one of my report, policies, procedures, and status remain the same. Number two, detention facility update. Currently, the detention facility has one detention officer vacancy, two applicants completed- completed the process and we're doing backgrounds on both of them right now to determine if we hire either one of them. On July 28th, the detention facility had an incident with eight disruptive inmates. Five of them were noncompliant. We had three of them that were the major aggressors. The detention personnel quickly brought order within the facility and I'd like to commend the following officers for their response and their professionalism to the incident. No personnel nor inmates were injured. Deputy Administrator Antizola, Lieutenant De Geary, Sergeant Hardisty, Chris Lucero, Mark Lucero, Officers Arizaga, Rodriguez, Reyes, Munoz, Delos Reyes, Natera, McDonald, Goikovich, Venater, Ferrante, Mosley, Cavetto, Graves, and Duron. The officers that were on shift at the time of the incident were Sergeant Mark Lucero, Lisa Lucero, Fisher, Rio Smith, and Provenzio. I'd like you to know that I'm very proud of the officers for their dedication to the detention facility and also in case you'll find my letter I submitted to the officers recognizing them for their actions and also the law enforcement agencies provided their assistance. I personally took a letter to all the agencies that responded. Thank you Sheriff for your people being there, New Mexico State Police and also the Silver City Police Department. Item number three, status remained the same. Item number four, our training update. Lieutenant De Geary, Sergeant Galindo have been conducting mandatory control force training for all the detention officers. Currently, all the detention officers have completed this recertification training. Luna County brought their training staff down, began recertifying on the use of the OC spray. Ten officers completed the training last week, including myself and Deputy Administrator at the, I guess, the officers enjoyed that, watching us go through the OC spray. Luna County has also agreed to train officers at no charge of the agency. Sergeant Galindo and the department's training officer will begin our 40-hour refresher next week. Sergeant Hardisty, Sergeant Lucero will be attending first-line supervisor training this week. If you recall, we tried to get them to this training last year and for whatever reason, we weren't able to get them, so this is just, we're now getting all of our, all of our sergeants now have attended this training. Sergeant Hardisty, Sergeant Lucero and Sergeant, Chris Lucero and Mark Lucero will attend the New Mexico Sheriff's Conference in Las Cruces and they will receive their 40 hours of refresher, of recertification. The department is continuing training with our SERC personnel, with the Department of Corrections, the administration and training staff. We critiqued the critical incident response and made some minor changes to our response policies as a result of July 28th. And I'd also like to say that all the training that you've allowed us to provide to our officers is paying off and I appreciate that very much. Item number five, on our intervention inmate support program, we did meet this last week in Deming and we're looking now at researching some foundation funding and also utilizing the Western New Mexico Research Department to see what we can do to provide some kind of assistance to our inmate support program. As far as the recognition, item six, I just want to recognize all the personnel that I listed above. Detention statistics, our average daily population for July 23rd through August 12th is seventy-one, is thirteen less than last month. High population males is seventy-one, five more than last month. Females is twenty-two, four more than last month. For the month of July 22nd through August 12th, there were seventy-one inmates, which is thirteen less than last month incarcerated in the facility. And this does show a slight decrease in activity. Monthly arrest totals for the month of July through August this reporting period, Silver City Police Department, one hundred and forty-three, New Mexico State Police, sixteen, Grant County SO, twenty-six, Santa Clara, seven, Baird, fifteen, Hurley PD, five. Adult probation, one, New Mexico game and fish, two. I'd like to also report that as of yesterday, we had a population of inmates that were booked into the facility at ninety-three. And I think the result of that is due to, the majority of the result of that is due to failure to appear, warrants that are being, individuals are being arrested for failure to appear and also adult probation violations. Item number eight, detention facility conducted twenty-eight district court transports. Division one had fifteen, division two had twelve, Silver City Municipal Court had eight, Santa Clara had zero, Baird Municipal Court had one and Hurley had zero. Medical transports were zero as compared to zeros for last month. So the total number of transports for this reporting period is twenty-two. I'm sorry, thirty-six as compared to twenty-two of last month. And our jail utilization, we had, our offense levels were thirty-one felonies, seventy-one misdemeanors. Other probation violations, which I just discussed with a warrant, an APO violations is a hundred and two, for a total of two hundred and four. And total hours in custody is ten thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven point forty-two hours. Average length of stay of seven point five eight days. And right now, the sentencing levels, there is, I should tell you, there is an increase as compared to last month. That's my report.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any questions for?
No, just good job with handling the situation. We really appreciate that.
How's our medical services working out? How's our medical services working out in the detention center? Is that still working all right? Any problems there?
I don't know, yes, or in fact, the only thing that I can, the only slight problem we're having is that they've hired some new, some new personnel and just getting them acquainted with the facility and they just, everything's new on the job form, so we have two more on there, they've just come on, so.
Are these the calls that we anticipated and wanted as far as once they're released, that they are maybe somewhat better off?
Yes, sir, I think, you know, we're using the program with Western and they're coming in and they have, from their, from their psychology department, they're bringing in some interns and they're working really well with the inmates. They're getting prepared for release, which is part of what we were trying to do with the inmate support program and that's working out really well. They're working in conjunction with the subgroup and.
Does that include life skills?
Yes, they're doing the life skills, they're finding jobs for them when they get out. I made a recommendation, yes, last week, to the inmate support program that we utilize possibly Western as a research project, see if they want to undertake that as, under the auspices of recidivism and then possibly using them to do that research and then go out and get some funding and then possibly compensate the inmates after they've been released that are, are going to complete the program, possibly funding them in some way, also through the resources.
The resource abuse, are we having any look there as far as? And sometimes that's hard to call until they get out, but maybe, you know, recidivism, any kind of, are you tracking that to where, you know, we're going, taking them through the substance abuse program and then their release and then are they returning? I know there's going to be failures, I don't expect a hundred percent, but I'd like to see some kind of improvement.
We have tracked a slight number of inmates that are participating in the resources that we have right now and they are being very successful. Problem is, Commissioner Hall is the addiction and I think that's, that's a problem that we're having is trying to solve that problem. I think our resources are very limited and I know hospitals working very, you know, very diligently to try and address that issue, but if we don't have the resources and the inmates don't have the funding and they don't have the insurance coverage, a lot of times they just rework back. Yes, sir.
And I do appreciate Mike is working with us, he's on that committee, on the substance abuse committee and he's working with us closely. And in fact, the program you have now and the one we're proposing, I think is going to mesh really nice.
You know, we gotta, we gotta do something different than what we're doing right now because what we have right now is just not working, no sir, and so we can't give up on it either.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, Mike, can you pinpoint any one or two incidents that created the disturbance at the detention center?
Actually, what it was is, we had, initially, we had some inmates that we had put in confinement, in the confinement status. We had to make some moves, which we constantly have to do within the facility and when we made those moves, they didn't appreciate us taking them where we had moved them out of, back to where they needed to be. And at that particular time, they just, the rest of the inmates decided that they were going to vocalize and so basically, that's what it, that's what kind of prompted the incident itself.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So Mike, wasn't it behavior, inmates that went into the confinement? It was, there was a series of bad behaviors?
Yes.
Okay.
You're welcome. Move, Earl.
Pretty much busy, down there. Rain got kept us busy. Nothing real major, just mostly a lot of cleanup. Hopefully, we'll be done with that Center Rita subdivision by the end of this week. I'm hoping to be done all well tomorrow and we just got some cleanup to finish that thing out. I've got a couple of guys in our chip spreader helping the city out right now, there's some chip sealing, I think hopefully they're going to be done today, so quit eating up my overtime. And we'd like to thank Joe Graha, that guy, he's been awfully busy out there in the Members' Area. He had to work till eleven o'clock one night and work all the next day till seven-thirty the next night, cleaning up the Members'. They had a three-inch rain out there in about thirty minutes, so he's been pretty busy. And he's also been the blade operator that's doing that Center Rita subdivision, so he's been a busy man here lately and I really like to thank him and plus all the other road departments, anything that's come up, everybody's been able to jump in and do whatever is necessary to help people out. And that's about all I got.
Thank you, Earl.
Thanks, Earl. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll start with pretty much Public Works. Justin's working at the airport, obviously, on the maintenance grant for 2015, doing a lot of weed eating out there at night and make sure, you know, EDP requires a certain amount of, off of the runway with, which you can see with the runway lights and so forth. So I do want to thank Robbie and Victor Placenta from Public Works, they've helped out tremendously out there. Of course, Robbie knows a lot of the equipment and he was able to jump on that right away. David Morrison, who works out there, is on Army, I mean, Air Force Reserve leave right now, so we're having to cover, hopefully, we're going to fill that other position here pretty quick. Continuing to work, Justin's working on the action plan. We're going to have the next meeting, will be in October. I know I have initially invited the commission the last meeting and it was a kickoff meeting, so I'll definitely keep you all informed on the next meeting that will come in October. We put some new tires on the R fire truck at the airport, it was one of the inspection, was one of the, and they did the inspections, one of the issues they had, making sure we did that. But ton part, weed control, obviously, just trying to keep the weeds and keep them down. So everybody talks about drought, I think with all the scientific information, I think what you have to do is just look at the weeds, knowing that we're getting a lot of rain, so Public Works Department is really working hard. We're also looking into the bids for the satellite restrooms, trying to get the, you know, those in place. The shooting range, you know, we had that, we had a grant from Freeport to do the trap building, so we're working hard at trying to get that, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, there's going to be some in-kind services with Grant County along with Freeport and some of their workers. So we're working hard to get that done. Also, the weeds and welding the target sheets out there and keeping those up, I think they're working really hard getting that done. Installed the bleachers over at the fairgrounds, hopefully, that didn't take too long, those were finally in and we did those. Conference Center, obviously, busy right now still. It's booked today, we've got five or six different organizations in there, DWI, there's some law enforcement training in the back, there's Wagner is in there, so that's an ongoing usage of the conference center. We're doing a good job of trying to keep up with that along with all the, you know, the activities in the evenings and on the weekends, so I want to thank the Public Works Department and Justin and his crew for that, they're working really hard. Senior program, Cindy's school has started, again, her prevention program is going into schools, she'll be starting that up pretty soon. The Association of Counties along with the Municipal League and the DWI affiliate has put together accreditation standards for adult administered compliance programs. It's a huge number of courses, over eighty courses, I don't know what the criteria is to graduate, but that's how many they have put together. I'll try to get a packet to you guys just so you can look at that and see what's being offered from customer service to compliance to confidentiality and all the issues that come with, with the DWI program, so she's working hard on that. BFDs, it's been quiet, been a lot of rain. We got the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department addition being put up. I want to thank Kevin Robinson, as you know, he took over for the architectural part of it for Mr. Redford. He's worked really hard with the contractor, everything's on schedule, he's been, any questions, he's been able to answer with any concerns and he's been, he's been on call whenever we needed him, so I want to thank him for that. Other than that, I want to thank the new fire chief for Towne Silver City, Tim Hydrick. He was appointed on behalf of the Rule Fire Chiefs Association and myself as a fire management officer, we want to congratulate him. I will be sending him a letter stating, you know, congratulations to him and how the VFDs want to work with the Towne Silver City. Other than that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, if you have any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, Randy, at the airport, the fuel situation, you know, we talked about it before, can we, what were we at there as far as the fuel?
We've got together with Jacob for the RFP, finally, that's going to be going out, but we're still, have no fuel at the airport and so, until we can get this situation about. I am going to be, hopefully, going to Ria dosso to attend the aviation conference by the Municipal League next month and within their criteria, a lot of that talks about the fuel and the situation and how you go about getting all that and so I'm hoping I could have some answers by then. But right now, that we have no fuel at the airport, pretty much the Forest Service planes are gone. Of course, you know, there's a lot of fires up in northwest part of the country and so most of them are over there along with the personnel, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall, where we are with the fuel is that Jacob has put together a pretty hefty request proposals to supply us fuel and trucks and we're reviewing that right now. I have a copy and Randy has a copy and Justin has a copy and we're reviewing that, it's pretty thick. We need to review it closely because there's some technical stuff in there, but we plan to put that out very soon.
Randy and I had this discussion, how many pilots would love to, you know, land here and refuel and then take in the community and stuff and they're not because there's no fuel and they do either Deming or Wurzburg and Wurzburg's got the best deal.
You know, just based on that real quick, the ab gas portion of this is really easy. It's the trucks and the jet fuel that are the real difficult part because you basically are going out for an RFP for somebody to provide that service, am I correct? So if you think about it, those trucks sit down there for twelve months a year, we have a full load of jet fuel, a full year, and it's used for about thirty days a year. That's the difficult part to put together.
Just full service?
Pretty much. So the ab gas part, we probably could have fixed ourselves very quickly, just putting the other part with it.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're moving forward with that, we know that's, that's an issue. I mean, every day, I, when I'm, we're covering right now, I'm helping them cover the flights, as you know, with the type of airport that we have, we have to have a fire truck on the runway when the flights come in and ten to fifteen minutes after it takes off. So working closely with Justin on making sure that that's being done, the inspections are being done every day. There's a nine inspection on Wednesdays that always, that also has to be done at nine o'clock at night to make sure all the lights are working and so forth and so on. So we're working hard with them on that and we're just trying to get through, as soon as we get this other person onboard, I think it'll settle down a little bit at the airport. We are making sure that the airports lounge that they have over there for UPS flies in there and stays, has to stay all day till at even the evening, that that's up to par and they have the facilities and everything is working for them. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, if you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Will you mind if we have about a five-minute recess real quick? All right, thank you.
Give you some time to think.
Okay, any more time to go into recess?
Some.
Call those favors, say five, say aye.
Aye.
Hi. Call back to order the Board of County Commissioners work session. We're working on county reports and we're with Anthony Catarus.
We're working on county reports and we're with Anthony Cataris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, we had the final on the North Hurley sewer system and I wanted to make sure everybody knows, I think I forwarded the information to all three commissioners that Terry Brunner from USDA Rural Development will be here the 21st, kind of like as a ribbon cutting type ceremony and apparently they chose me to be the master of ceremony, so we'll, we'll get that done.
That's at 1?
That's at 1 o'clock.
Does that mean a coat and tie?
Well, I don't, I think it's going to be too hot to wear a coat and tie out there. It'll actually be at the, at the lift station area and so, but anyway, we're looking, we're looking for, you know, people to support out there.
Is that near by the park?
It's, yeah, we go down towards the park and go down to the next street and back behind there where they used to have the, the wetlands, yeah, where the wetlands were.
It's on the 21st.
Yes, and it'll be a week from Thursday. Also, we have been working, of course, with Engineers Inc. on the Colonia's project for North Hurley roads. They're having some issues with the right-of-way, we knew that was going to happen, there's not a lot, not a lot of information on the road itself and so they're having some issues identifying right-of-way, you know, properties going and out of the roadway, so, so we're trying to fix those up and they're going to move on, we approved additional scope of work, trying to get the drainage plan done also and so hopefully in the next couple of months we'll, we'll be to the next level. Our office, of course, has been pretty busy just trying to address the needs of the public with Violet being gone and Dory now being gone, it's hit us pretty hard in the past couple of, more the past couple of days than the past couple of weeks, we've had so many people come in and asking for things that it's difficult to get to your job and so we've been trying, we've got the advertisement out, of course, for Violet's position, we're attempting to do a little bit of restructuring, Violet, of course, I would say is probably irreplaceable, the knowledge that she had combined with years of experience and experience with our GIS system, we'll be lucky to find somebody to do half of that job and so we've kind of, well, we're going to try to restructure it to where we are going to try and give the title search portion of it, the deed search portion of it, the portion where people come in and ask some things, we're going to try and combine that with Dory's position and so we're hoping to alleviate some of the issues that our mapper had. If you are addressing the public consistently and constantly, you can't really, really do a, of course Violet did it, but, but I think that people have issues trying to do the parcel mapping and that's, of course, extremely important. We want to incorporate some additional GIS in that position also, we want to try and get our right-of-ways mapped, we have some issues with, with parcels not matching up, we want to try and do some corrections, so that position will solely be a really technical position, try and get our GIS where we want it to be and we'll try and do the deed research and the customer service with Dory's position, so hopefully that's going to work out the way we want to. We're going to do a lot of cost training in the office, we didn't know how hard it was going to hit us, but I guess when you have five people and, and you lose two, it really becomes a pretty, pretty bad issue, so we knew that as soon as Violet told us she was retiring, but then we got a double whammy and, and so we've been, we've been pretty busy as far as that way. I would like to bring to the attention of the commission, our ICIP will be due in September and so I will bring a resolution and an ICIP to the commission on our next meeting for approval. I think that I have a pretty good handle on the projects that need to be in the ICIP, what I don't have is the priority. I'm going to need some, some input from the commission for the priority of those projects. We certainly need to place anything that we're going to go for capital outlay on our top three priorities. They voice that that's, that's the way they're going to, that's the way they're going to see it and that's what needs to be done and so we want to make sure we prepare ourselves and not have any issues with DFA once, if there is a capital outlay project, so.
They being who?
Well, DFA, pretty much, that's, that's where it comes from, they're the ones that review all the, the projects and all of the, all the requests. We have seen a few instances where that's not necessarily the truth, but, but we also want to, we want to prepare ourselves, so I think if we have all our ducks in a row, it's a lot easier, I know we actually do get an appropriation.
Right. Yeah, I noticed last year we got one that wasn't even on our ICIP zone, he didn't really ask for it too, so sometimes if it behooves them, they do as they please.
Well, and that's kind of what I was talking, I was alluding to Commissioner, but, other than that, I guess we'll try and get some people hired, try and get our, our business back in order and planning. I will be submitting this week another request to, to finance authority for a update for our comprehensive plan and been trying to negotiate with Priscilla, hopefully they're, they're going to take that on and so we're, I don't know how much to ask for yet and so that's the only thing that's kind of holding us up for that application.
Any questions, Brad?
How's the construction going?
Commissioner, I wish I could tell you that it's going along good, but our contractor's waiting on the building, so I think that they are supposed to pour some concrete either this week or next week and, and then they'll just wait on the building to come in before they continue the construction.
What's the possibility of it being done in time of fair?
Well, I don't know that, but I'm thinking that probably not going to be completed.
How's it? When was that, Randy? Thursday?
The only thing we've been able to do is to tell the contractor that if indeed they aren't, if it's not completed by fair time, that there won't be any construction during that, during the fair, so they won't be able to schedule that construction.
Okay. Thank you very much and we'll move to elected, start with the sheriff.
Just wanted to report, we're all aware the school's starting up again, so I want to encourage the public to be aware of the school buses, the kids crossing crosswalks and stuff like that. I will have my deputies out in full force in the areas that we have bus routes and I encourage the public to report any reckless drivers that are not abiding by the bus rules and stuff, so. Also, next week we will be sending some deputies to training in Las Cruces for the sheriff's conference, I think I have five going to that training, we're going to start concentrating a little bit more training. Also, I wanted to report, I was able to hire the three deputies that I had openings for, hopefully two of them will be out pretty soon, two of them are already certified and one is uncertified that we will have to send to the academy, but really, really good candidate that that's going to be an asset to the sheriff's office. I also did want to report, we do have a missing person out in members that we're diligently working right now, unfortunately the, the weather has been a factor in the way we have been searching, the report of this person being swept away in the river is what we're following up on, we get different calls on, on different things that we're following up on, but it has, the weather has really hampered our, our progress. Every day I have sent out deputy detectives actually out there, they've been combing the, the river, water keeps rising, goes down, they've, they've encountered some rough terrain, they've been out there on ATVs, walking, today they're actually out there walking certain areas that they were not able to get into, so hopefully we'll be able to come across something. I know I just asked if anybody has any information, if they please contact us. And I want to thank the staff for what they do, I mean, you know, dealing with stuff like that is, is pretty, an event that we really want to bring closer to and actually hopefully we find something, but they've been working hard on it and we're going to continue to work. I want to thank the newspaper for keeping the public updated, there is a lot of questions from family wanting to know what's going on and the press has been helping us with that and we're going to continue until we find something out of what, what happened out there. Other than that, it's been very busy, the guys have been back and forth and, you know, I just want to thank them for what they do. Other than that, I have nothing else and yes, if you have any questions.
For sheriff? Guess not, thanks. Hi, Mary. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Chairman Commissioners, the assessor's office is running really smooth and I just want to thank staff for their dedication and hard work. I also want to let Anthony know that I know with Violet being gone, we worked very closely with Violet, that he can send those people over to our office and we can attempt to help them as well with the mapping and questions with the deeds as well too, and that's all. Thank you.
Rob?
Sheriff Commissioner?
Nothing today. Madam Manager?
To give the commissioners an update, recall that I went up to Albuquerque, not last week, but I think the week before, for the tally of the Corey Caminos vote on whether they would unionize or not and it did pass and I believe that their union is going to be certified, if it hasn't already, so the next steps will be negotiating a contract with that group. So, we have another little unit at Grant County.
Any questions, Brad?
Congratulations.
Anything today?
Actually, yes, I've got a, we've had a couple meetings here, we've had the Echo Watershed board meeting and we've had our Swaka meetings here lately and of course Swaka's been all about, about their tribal management and our Echo Watershed meeting last week was really good and it seems like we're getting a little more participation from, from the Forest Service and from the local entities, especially WNMU. I've got a meeting with Dr. Shepherd and we're going to start reviewing what we're going to need from their GIS department. We're also going to, with, with your permission, I'm going to approach him and see what we have to do or see how we could help him get a baseball team down here and I know we've been working on that for about three and a half years now, but we're going to see what we can do, see if he can open up that line of communication again and see if we can rally up the troops and get some, some baseball going down here for WNMU. That's pretty much it, I'd just like to tell everyone, especially the road department, thank you all for what you're doing, especially with all this, all this movement of dirt and, and clearing up the roads for us, we really do appreciate that. And everyone does a wonderful job, it's really, it's really soothing to know that everybody's real capable of, of doing their jobs here at the county and, and makes our job a lot, a lot easier, so thank you very much for what you do.
Commissioner? Just a few things, I just want to acknowledge the committee, we've been working on the annual ordinance within the meeting several times a month and we're about halfway through, it's been quite an endeavor and so I, I want to thank them for their work and also the committee as far as the, the Adult Substance Abuse Treatment Center, you know, we talked about this tax and I can't tell you how important it is to address this issue as far as substance abuse and we've got to do something within our community and this, and the grocery receipts tax that we're talking about is a big part of that and as a community, it's very, very important to address it and it's, yes, it's going to take a, you know, one-third of a penny out of your pocket for every dollar, but it's worth it and I'm telling you now, it's going to make a difference in our community and I want to thank the staff, I want to thank the other commissioners for supporting that, I know there's other projects that, you know, that are involved in that, but, let me see, what else, oh, the other staff. So many times, you know, particularly now that Ms. Abby is, is wearing two, two hats, it's been very difficult and I want to thank her for the work that she has done and in a time whenever we're dealing with some very complex issues, that she's got to wear both hats at the same time and still taking care of everyday events, so thank Abby for the work that you've done and then the other staff, you know, from Rhodes to Randy to, to Anthony to during budget time, Denisea and the elected people, I want to thank you, you make our work a lot easier because of your competency and such and I want to thank the hospital. The hospital, you're addressing some very difficult issues, some of the public may not understand that what you're doing, you're trying your best to keep those doors open and it's, you have to make some very, very difficult decisions, you and the board and I support you as far as the, the health care and the hospice is concerned, I know that was difficult, it was difficult for me because I have some very close friends that were impacted and I think that you've responded well to that and trying to open up other doors for those folks so that they can be taken care of, so thank you. And other than that, that's it?
All right. I've been kind of busy. In Dallas last week, Gallup last week, leaving for Albuquerque here in a few minutes. I was lucky enough to be appointed as chairman of the Tax Review Committee for New Mexico Association of Counties, so I'll be doing the testifying before the LFC and the tax stabilization committees this year at the legislature for NMAC. Think they think I know a little bit about taxes, I don't, pay some of them, but anyway, in Dallas, we, we had an opportunity to present to Moody's, we heard Mark talk about that earlier on the bond issue, that was a, that was something, it was kind of fun to go down to, to the big city and actually tell them why we're important and why we deserve a better rating. Spent about two hours giving a presentation and got back on the plane and came home, so going to Albuquerque tonight for the, the tax committee and that's all I have at this time. I know we're working a lot on Corey Caminos, we'll have a lot more of that come out in the next month or so. So, with that being said, I guess we can go into executive session if I can get a motion.
So, move. Second? Call those favor, say five, say nine.
Aye.
Motion passed, and we can get a roll call.
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you'll be entering executive session?
Yes, sir, I am.
Chairman Caston, are you aware that you'll be entering into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you'll be entering into executive session?
Yes. Clear, now I'm in executive session.